I wish to use this opportunity to warmly congratulate you on your election on behalf of the mission and the Ghanaian community. We are especially thrilled and grateful that you made time to interact with the community and the African diaspora in New York, in the tri-state area and I believe far afield, many of whom have demonstrated their commitment to Mother Ghana. At a rather personal level, I must say that it is my singular honour and pleasure to welcome you as President, having had the privilege of working closely with you in your previous incarnation as Minister for Foreign Affairs during the term of former President John Adekun Kufu. Before I proceed any further, allow me to say a big thank you to the management and board of the Africa House, and especially to its director and Dr Yar Nyalco for the kind cooperation we have enjoyed and the excellent facilities that you have placed at our disposal. Our thanks also go to the management of the NYU Kimmel Centre and to Dr Sibel Reva, the NYU Senior Vice Provost, who has so warmly welcomed us to this campus. The numbers of people in this hall, and I believe in an adjoining hall, demonstrates the great interest in our nation's development, and it is my hope that our interaction this evening gives us all a better appreciation of the policies going forward and what role the Ghanaian diaspora can play in these efforts. I am confident that we will leave this hall inspired, and with a positive spirit, right attitudes and right actions, I believe we can make a difference and work together towards the goal of making Ghana our beloved nation great and strong. I wish us all a most rewarding and fruitful interaction, and allow me to welcome you once again, Mr President. Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, so in the interest of being brief, as you know, we are about to hear from His Excellency. He's going to have some words with us, and in the spirit of a town hall, there'll be questions right after that. As you know, those of us who are in the academic world, the number one issue of our generation, of course, is our economic development. How do we get our country, Ghana, our continent, Africa, right up there with all the other nations in the world? And so that's what all of us are focused on, and I know that that's a main consideration of His Excellency. And before I call him up here, you know, I'm an economics professor, and I just can't resist saying, he also has an economics degree from the University of Ghana. I don't think he mentions that. So his excellency, in your honour, I'm wearing my Ligon tie, okay? So, thank you. So on that note, I'm going to ask His Excellency to either come up or to use the mic there, whichever he prefers.
Senior Vice Provost of New York University, Professor Yar Nyalco, and members of the Faculty of the University, Minister for Foreign Affairs, a Minister for Gender, Children and Social Protection, Deputy Minister for Environment, Science, Technology and Innovation, Ambassador and Permanent Representative of Ghana to the United Nations, Secretary to the President, Deputy Chief of Staff. We have representatives of the various Ghanaian associations here, the Chamber of Commerce, the National Council of Ghanaian Associations, Association of Ghanaian Lawyers, the Association of Ghanaian Engineers and Architects of America. Fellow Ghanaians, ladies and gentlemen, I have first of all to thank the University of New York, or New York University, for the opportunity of gathering so many Ghanaians here to come and listen to me. I'm very grateful, Senior Vice Provost, for the opportunity. But before I go on, I want you to join me in one small solemn act. Today, in our crowd, we went through a very sad ceremony. The young soldier who was brutally murdered in Ghana last week, today was the state burial that was given in his honour. I would be grateful if all of you would join me in standing for one minute silence in his memory. This is to the memory of Major Mahama. May so, and the souls of all the faithful departed, rest and abide in the bosom of the Lord until the last day of the resurrection, when we shall all meet again. Amen. I noticed from the programme that I've been billed for a keynote address. Wow. I think we're going to engage ourselves in a conversation, social about a keynote address. But first of all, let me thank all of you very much for responding to this invitation that I was coming. I came here the day before yesterday, on Wednesday, to come and attend the Oceans Conference, the first of its kind, being organised by the United Nations about the measures that all of us have to take to conserve our marine resources and marine environment. The United Nations Secretary General, Antonio Guterres, has honoured me and honoured the Ghanaian people by appointing me as co-chair of the group of eminent personalities who he has selected to be advocates for the implementation of the seventeen Sustainable Development Goals that the United Nations agreed to in 2015. This... It is a double honour because my predecessor as President, John Mahama, was co-chair, and after he lost the election, the Secretary General found it fit to ask me. It's a big honour to Ghana that Ghanaian leaders are so honoured by the international community and by the Secretary General. We're grateful to him. So that's what brought me to New York. But everywhere I go in the world, whenever the official transactions are over, as much as possible, I like to meet compatriots and find out what's going on with you, and hearing a little bit from me about what's going on at home. And that is exactly what the pattern that we're going to follow tonight. As you know, we've been in office now for five months. Seventh of January was when I took the oath, and the government really has been properly situated for about now three months. We have the merit of having established the fastest government in the history of the Fourth Republic. It's not a mean achievement, even if I say so myself, because we have quite cumbersome procedures for establishing governments in Ghana. But with the cooperation of the parliament, we've been able to do it, and the government is now fully seated. Apart from the delivery, delivering the message on the state of the nation, which took place in February, the most important governmental action so far has been the budget that was passed by the government at the end of March. It has earned the name, the title, the Asamba Budget. So Asamba, for those who have not learned it in Akam, means good news. So it's the Good News Budget that we passed in Accra. The important aspect of the budget was threefold. First of all, it was to signal to the Ghanaian people the path that we wanted to take to fulfil the various commitments that we made in the electoral consultation. Because for me, that is the most important commitment that I have, that those pledges and promises that we made to the people of Ghana that persuaded them to give us the opportunity of office, we have a sacred duty to make sure that those pledges are fulfilled and implemented. So the budget... The budget is the first indication of that. And what did it do? First of all, to signal to the world the deep commitment we have for a private sector-led development of our country. We've had a great deal of talk in the past about the private sector being the engine of growth, et cetera, but the concrete measures that had needed to be taken to put us on that path, in my view, we have not seen it, but we have determined on it. The first was to take off the back of the private sector, a whole raft of burdensome taxes that have been imposed in the last few years because of government's insatiable appetite for revenue. Our view was that, to the extent that we could stimulate the Ghanaian private sector to produce, to act and produce, the more likely we were to be able, not only to develop our economy, but to create jobs and then enhance the living standards of our people. So over a billion CDs' worth of tax cuts were brought in. I'm very lucky, I have a very brilliant finance minister, who's a wizard banker, investment banker, and even against a very difficult background, was able to create a very, very, very optimistic view of how we could tackle the problems of our country. So the tax cuts were the first. The second was to provide an important stimulus package for Ghanaian industries, distressed companies and industries. A hundred million dollars' worth of money has been earmarked to stimulate local enterprises that have fallen into difficulties because of the very difficult economic environment that we inherited. And then again, because it has played such a crucial role in our economy, was also to find the means to begin the redevelopment of our agriculture. We've initiated a programme we call Planting for Food and Jobs, which is designed to enhance the productivity of Ghanaian agriculture. Ghanaian agriculture in the last few years has been on a downward spiral, like other sectors of our economy, and we got to a situation whereby we're having to import basic things that traditionally we were producing in Ghana from our neighbours. We're importing plantain from the Côte d'Ivoire, tomatoes from Burkina Faso. We're not capable of growing plantain in Ghana. We are capable of doing it, and we're capable also of growing our own tomatoes, but we find ourselves now having to import because of the state of our agriculture. So the programme, Planting for Food and Jobs, identified two hundred thousand farmers in Ghana to whom we were going to give, if you like, preferential treatment as a pilot programme to see how it will work. And it is in three parts. First of all, to furnish them with improved seedlings for various things, maize, yam, cassava, soya and sogan, which were the preferred group of products that we were concentrating on. At the same time, reduce the cost to them of the critical ingredient of fertiliser, we slashed the price of fertiliser to our farmers by some fifty percent. And then, for me, the most critical aspect, for the last five years, until the budget of March this year, not a single graduate of the colleges of agriculture in our country had been employed in the public sector. Not one. So you have some three to four thousand young men and women with the skills and the knowledge to help our farmers, for those who have not been able to get employment in the private sector, sitting at home, twiddling their thumbs, wasting away, and our agriculture also in decline. So we have begun the employment of these young men and women as extension officers. This year's budget provided for the employment of one thousand two hundred of them, to be able to assist. With the commitment that every year from now on, we will be employing at least a thousand five hundred to two thousand. Not only do we wipe out the deficit, but then those who are coming into the market will also find employment in the public sector. They are such a key element in any successful agricultural policy in Ghana, the extension officers who can then help our farmers adopt better, more efficient, modern methods of producing food and cash crops. So that was launched in Goso in April. The deployment is taking place. It is taking place to meet the rainy season in the south, and is now being deployed in the north, because as you know very well, the rainy season in the north is always like a month, six weeks later than it is in the south. But the general deployment is taking place, and all the reports that we're getting is that the inputs are reaching the target, that is, the farmers themselves are not being diverted on the way for all the reasons that we have known in our country, which are unfortunate. That aspect of the management of our public finances is a matter of great concern to me. If we accept that our country is not a poor country, and that we have the resources properly managed, by properly managed, I mean also honestly managed... With the correct policies, we should be capable of financing our own dependent, our own development, so that the era of dependence on others for aid, for charity, for handouts, we can put that behind us and move Ghana on the way to a more substantial... I'm not one to look at gift halls in the mouth or to be anything other than gracious to those who have helped us, but frankly, I do not think that that is the path on which the Ghanaian nation should be committed, that we will be dependent on others to be able to finance our budget, on others to be able to set our priorities for us. We have to finance our budgets ourselves, and we have to set our own priorities for ourselves. So you will be hearing a great deal in all my speeches about the Ghana that I am seeking, with your support, active support, to build, that is, a Ghana beyond aid, a Ghana which will free itself from a mindset of dependence, of charity, of aids and handouts, a Ghana that is going to mobilise its own resources to develop and confront its own problems. We're capable of it. We have the means to do it. So there are, as a consequence, some decisions that we have taken that hopefully will be operational very soon. The matter of corruption in our society, in our public life, cannot be ignored by any of us, if indeed we want to see a more prosperous future for our country. Unfortunately, an atmosphere has developed whereby prosecutions for acts of corruption, when they are undertaken by the Attorney General, because the Attorney General is a member of a government, is a Minister of State, it leads automatically to the cry of witch hunt. So the decision has been taken, but it has been done elsewhere, that we would establish an Office of Special Prosecutor, independent of the executive... Who will be chosen in a transparent manner, who will be a creature protected by statute and independent of the executive, and who will make the decisions about investigating as well as prosecuting offences of corruption. This meeting of parliament that has just started will have the law, will have the law before them, before they rise, so that hopefully by the middle of July, the law on the Office of Special Prosecutor will be in place, and then the various measures that have to be taken to bring the law into being, will be, the office into being, will be undertaken. It's an important piece of legislation for us, just as all the various measures that have been put in place to establish accountability within the executive has also been done. For the first time, again, in the history of the Fourth Republic, all ministers of my government, including myself, have declared their assets and filed their assets with the Auditor General. We're going to... We are, in the course of this parliament, also going to ask the parliament on a free vote to look at the whole assets declaration regime, to see whether or not there is support for the idea of an open declaration of assets, not only the filing, but that they should be public. There's, the argument about this matter is not quite, is not as straightforward as it should be. There are those who say that our traditional methods of inheritance, nephews, et cetera, waiting for uncles to pop off... ...may not lend itself to an open declaration of assets, because it may hasten the attitude of nephews towards their uncles and the rest of them. So I think that it is a matter which, when it comes before the parliament, will be dealt with not on the basis of whips, but on the basis of the individual conscience of the two hundred and seventy-five members of parliament, and we will leave it to them to see whether the time is right for us to move from just filing confidentially assets declarations, but making them public. Other measures are being taken. Public procurement law in Ghana has been woefully abused in these last few years. The teachings of the public procurement law, essentially about the need for competitive bidding for public transactions, have been more or less put aside for a system of sole sourcing of contracts. But sole sourcing, as all of us know, that is the obvious avenue for widespread corruption, and so it proved to be. We are putting that era of sole sourcing of contracts behind us and insisting on competitive bidding. I have appointed a minister to the Office of the President, whose duty it will be to oversee, not administer the law on public procurement. We don't want politicians administering that law, and the Ghanaian legal system for that provides for an independent body of people. But we want, I want somebody in my office who will be looking at the processes across the length and breadth of the country and satisfy us that indeed the teachings of the public procurement law are being met and fulfilled. So these are some of the measures. There are measures also in the Financial Administration Act, which have been, which are being implemented to make sure that the leakages that we have in our public finances are brought to an end. I can give you just one small example. At the ports of Ghana, the Tema Port, the law enforcement agencies have recently exposed a syndicate of nineteen customs officials, working with the representative of three freight forwarding companies, who over the course of the year, just between them, are responsible. Allegedly, they have not been tried and convicted, so I am not saying that they are there, but this is the allegation that has been made, that of one point two billion CDs' worth of revenue has been diverted by this group of people in this period. Well, if you can multiply that by the numbers who are involved in the clearance of goes and in the imposition of duties at our ports, you can understand what I'm saying, that if indeed we can mobilise our resources and deal with them honestly, we have the resources to finance all the key measures of our development of ourselves. And... I am determined, I am determined that in my period, the four years that I've been given so generously by the Ghanaian people, that concrete measures will be put in place to set us in that direction. The measures doing with the stimulating of the economy, of trying to come to control, the control of our public finances, have also gone in hand-in-hand with important social action that we've had to take. As you're all aware, for the last so many years, these constant efforts that I have made, the presidency of Ghana, I've promised the Ghanaian people that broadening access to education for our people is probably the single most important decision that we need to take and implement. You have a situation whereby there has been so much seepage in our educational system. The numbers that come through from the junior secondary school system to the senior high school system who fall out, not largely, not necessarily because of lack of ability, but lack of money, where parents, poor parents, do not have the opportunity to be able to keep their wards in school. It is a major loss to the development of our country. That is why I've made the commitment that, were we to come into office, senior high school education, like junior high school education in Ghana, will become free for the individual student. Making these commitments, I was always being accused of playing politics with education, and I kept saying to my opponents, it is not a political gimmick, it is a tool for the development of our country, and that is why I want us to be able to do it. Fortunately, those who are charged with managing our finances have said that from September, from the new academic year, the beginning of the academic year 2017, 2018, all those who pass their BEECE and find themselves at the, in the senior high school, will go there free of charge. Will be going there free of charge. So that will begin in September, and it will then become a feature of our educational system. At the same time, we're making strenuous efforts to improve radically the quality also of the instruction that, it's not just enough that people go to school, but that they should get there and be taught properly. There's going to be a major mobilization for us to get the teachers that can help, and that also will have the sufficient quality to be able to bring our educational system up. Our country has been famous amongst the countries of Africa for having been a pioneer in the quality of education it provided our people right from primary up to university. Ghanaian schools are famous across the length and breadth of Africa and across the world as well, and yet in recent times, the quality of people emerging from our secondary and other schools have not been as we would want. We have to change those facts. So that is the exercise on which we are engaged as well. Then, on the other half of the social system of our country is our health system. It is probably the greatest legacy that John Ajikun Kufu, outstanding Ghanaian leader, left us in his eight years of high-quality government, the National Health Insurance Scheme. He came to replace a system of cash and carry, which was proving to be extremely inequitable in its incidence, because it meant that poor people were finding it extremely difficult to get access to decent healthcare in Ghana. We replaced it with an insurance system that meant that paying very, very small amounts of premium to get a card, when you got into trouble, you'd be able to have access to reasonable healthcare in the public health system. The National Health Insurance Scheme was being bogged down, has become bogged down, not being, has become bogged down in debt, enormous debt, and it has meant that in the last couple of years, provider after provider of health services was drawing credit that they were giving to government and insisting on cash before delivery. So through the back door, because of the financial difficulties that the National Health Insurance Scheme was getting into, we were getting back to a situation of cash and carry. I believe that the insurance system is absolutely critical for the welfare of our country and therefore believe that we needed to find a solution to the financial crisis in which the N H I has become bogged in. We did so, we have done so, making some choices that some people found very strange. Was asked why I had chosen an accountant and an economist to be Minister of Health and not a doctor or somebody with a scientific background. My answer was very simple. The problem of our National Health Insurance Scheme was the difficulties, the deficit, the financial deficit that the scheme had fallen into. It was very, very important for the survival of the scheme that we should find somebody who would have the capacity, the ability to dream up and think of innovative methods of putting the scheme on a sound financial footing. So I brought one of the outstanding economists in the public life of our country, Kwakuajiman Menue, to come and head the Ministry of Health, and already that decision is paying He is committed to settling the areas of the N H I system by the end of this year and then putting a more robust financial provisions in place to sustain the national health system going forward. So this is giving you a flavor of what's in these first five months we've been doing, where we are relaunching the national identification system so that by the end of this year, everybody resident in Ghana is going to get a card, establishing their identity, who they are, what they are, what they do, et cetera, for the purposes of planning, for the purposes of information, we're going to long last to have an N I D system in Ghana that is universal, everybody. It'll come to you here when we have finished the people in Ghana. But above all, there's one important action my government has taken, which is of the greatest of concern to me. Our country has considerable mining and mineral wealth and mineral deposits. Indeed, the first town, modern town, that was built on the coast of Ghana, was built by the Portuguese in the 15th century. It's called Elmina, the mine in Portuguese. Tells you that Ghana historically, and also the country became known as what, the Gold Coast, before independence, then mineral wealth is an extremely important part of the patrimony and the heritage of our country. So mining and exploiting these mineral wealth and resources is very much part and parcel of the economic structures and activities of our country, and so they should be. But what we cannot afford is to have the kind of mining that is also compromising our environment. so that now people with superior machinery are mining in the riverbeds of our country and drying up and polluting the rivers of Ghana. That cannot happen and continue in our country. So we began a nationwide campaign to bring the phenomenon of illegal small-scale mining, which we know as Galamsay. We're going to bring it to an end in Ghana. And I want to repeat, we're not doing it because we're against mining. No, we can't be against mining in Ghana. The wealth of, a large part of the wealth of our country is in our mineral resources. We have to bring it up, we have to exploit it, the welfare of our people. But what we're not going to allow, our people to compromise the future of our country, devastate our countryside, dry up our river bodies, pollute our atmosphere by illegal small-scale mining methods, we're not going to allow that. And those engaged in that activity, there's going to be a structured effort to find alternative livelihoods for them so that it doesn't become a question of throwing people out onto the heap and then forgetting about them. Some of them are going to be engaged in filling up the holes, again. Some of them are going to be engaged in cleaning up the countryside. But it is an extremely important initiative we have taken, and we need the support of all Ghanaians. It's not going to be easy, because there are vested interests, powerful forces that obviously are sustaining this industry, this Galamsay industry. There's a lot of money at stake, and whenever there's a lot of money at stake, there can be a lot of very ruthless and powerful people exploiting the opportunities. But be that as it may, we are also going to make sure that we secure the future of our country, that we are going to secure the welfare of our people going down the road. So I can go on? We should have an opportunity also for you to let me know what some of your preoccupations are. But just a couple of things that I'd like to say before I sit down, because I know that is the Rupa. The law was passed in President Kufu's time, I was a member of the government, that passed the law that made it possible for Ghanaians living outside the shores of Ghana to be able to contribute to the democratic consultations that our people go and vote. So the law has been there for the last eight or nine years, but after it was passed, the Electoral Commission, at the time headed by Dr. Kudjua Faraja, indicated that it was not in a position to implement the law. And as you know, quite properly, the constitution of our country has conferred on the Electoral Commission exclusive authority to deal with all election-related matters. Quite properly, a president or a minister or political person cannot have any direct influence on how the electoral system of our country is conducted. I have no problem with that arrangement, and it's quite proper that it should be so. But it does mean therefore that the decision whether or not this law will be implemented is in the charge of the Electoral Commission. Dr. Faraja's successor, the young woman who's there now, Charlotte Ose, has indicated once that she too felt she wasn't ready. I told her, I said, I cannot for the life of me think how Senegalese and Malians and Guineans and Togolese and others can vote in their elections and Ghanaians cannot. I cannot understand that. But then, as I say, this is not a situation where I can say, oh, I'm the president, so I am ordering you. I don't have the power to do so. But what we have is the power of advocacy. You, me, all of us, raise our voice on this matter. Let those who are in charge of our electoral, the management of our electoral system, know that it is an important matter for all of us, and we think that the time has come for them to be able to find a solution as to how Ghanaians outside Ghana can vote in elections. It would be wonderful if the arrangements can be made so the 2020 election would enable Ghanaians overseas to be able also to vote. The second, in the course of the campaign, and when I came here and inside in Ghana also, I made a commitment that if I won the presidential election, I was going to establish an Office of Diaspora and Affairs at the presidency so that we would have, a department of the presidency will be charged with dealing with the matters that affect you overseas, those of you who are coming back, port matters, access to information about what's available to be done, the whole transitional arrangements that you have to go through if you're coming back from here to come in. Well, that promise has been fulfilled. There is an Office of Diaspora and Affairs at the presidency as we speak now. It has been there for the last two months. It is headed by an overseas Ghanaian, Akwesi Ababiu, who's been living in London, he's there now, he's being assisted by Nadia, who's a young lady who's been living in Canada, so the North American influences also there in the office, and there began to set up the Diaspora Office to handle the various matters that concern you. Their main preoccupation at the moment is organizing the Homecoming Summit that they intend to hold in the first week of July, in which hopefully as many of you as possible are going to participate and come, and then we can then begin to map out a way in which the skills and the expertise and the capital and the interest that you have here can be mobilized for the development of our country, that together we can find a way to develop Ghana together. So let me bring my keynote address to an end at this stage and give the opportunity for us to have one or two questions and answers.